What we wanted to do is to kind of regroup from last week's meeting and articulate some of the things that we felt we as a school committee didn't present to you. Under the Education Reform Act of 1993, school committees have essentially two major responsibilities. That's budget and policy. This law puts the daily operations of the district in the hands of the administrators, and then each building principal is in charge of their own building. District policy is our responsibility as we determine the what that governs the district, and the administrative team develops the how to implement the policies. So we'll give you a few examples. State came through with policy recommendations for concussions, and we adopted the policy. We fitted it to Cohasset Public Schools, and then the district implemented the procedures on how to train staff and students on concussion training. Another example is the committee developed a policy for visitor access to our buildings, and then the district developed the procedures for visitors, and together with the school committee, we secured the funds for the capital needs to make sure our buildings were secure and that the policy, that the procedures for visitor access to our buildings could be implemented. Those are just two examples. Our policies are primarily derived from the Massachusetts Association for School Committees and are updated continuously as conditions merit. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education also contributes to the policies for the Commonwealth Educational Institutions. And we have a list of policies for you which you can take on your way out that are pertinent to our conversation. You can look them up on the website, and we have that articulated. And quickly, they are nondiscrimination on the basis of sex, background checks, D.C. J.I.S. query policy, public participation at school committee meetings, staff conduct, personnel records, student welfare, public right to know, and bullying prevention. Like I said, you can pick up the list on your way out, and everything is on our school Our policy subcommittee meets regularly to update these policies and revise our policies, and it takes us two reads. We do two public readings of every policy before we adopt any changes. From the policy, our families and student handbooks articulate the reporting procedures for students if they feel they've been discriminated against or harassed, or any policy, or any protocol that's needed to support the policies. Our district handbooks also define what a mandated reporter is and outline our current memorandum of understanding with the Cohasset Police Department. And finally, our staff handbook for all employees defines a statement of expectations for being a mandated controlled reporter. So the policies and procedures are part of our new employee indoctrination program as well as professional development for all staff at the beginning of each school year, each and every school year. Civil rights and 51A training are presented in two forms, via video feed, a video presentation, and also represented at each building level every year. However, we understand that policies are just documents and that the protocols need to be implemented. Extra steps will continue to be taken to ensure that all staff members of our educational community are aware of procedures regarding the welfare of our students. We want to ensure that each one of our students are clear on who they can go talk to about any concerns that they may have. We also want to note that once a matter is placed in the hands of the police or the DCF, Department of Children and Family Services, we, the district, hit the pause button or put on hold any internal review in order to prevent any compromise at all of the police investigation. We want to encourage you to continue to reach out to each of us collectively or individually and to the district administration with any of your concerns.
Thank you. So Ellen spoke about policies and how they're implemented, and we do have one in place called "Public Participation at School Committee Meetings," and it's filed B-E-D-H. Again, you can find all of the school committee policies on the Cohasset K-12 website, CohassetK12.org website. There's a "School Committee" tab, and if you...
I put it on the paper over there.
Okay, but if you, if you touch on the "School Committee" tab, there's a dropdown, and the policy manual is all available for you to see online. So, "Public Participation at School Committee Meetings." All regular and special meetings of the school committee shall be open to the public. And just as a little side note to that, these are not public meetings, but they are meetings held in public, which is what it means, shall be open to the public. Executive sessions will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The school committee desires citizens of the district to attend its meetings so that they may become better acquainted with the operations and the programs of our local public schools. In addition, the committee would like the opportunity to hear the wishes and ideas of the public. In order that all citizens who wish to be heard before the committee have a chance, and to ensure the ability of the committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner, the following rules and procedures are adopted. One, at the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals or group representatives will be invited to address the committee. The chairperson shall determine the length of the public participation segment. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. The presiding chairperson may permit extension of this time limit. Topics for discussion must be limited to those items listed on the school committee meeting agenda for that evening. Four, improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, the chairperson may terminate that individual's privilege of address. All remarks will be addressed through the chairperson of the meeting. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any members of the school community. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. Seven, written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the committee before or after the meeting for the committee members' review and consideration at an appropriate time. So that is a longstanding, a longstanding policy that's been in effect the entire time I've been on the school committee. We don't read it at the beginning of meetings typically, but these are different circumstances. So, next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody have anything that they would like to say? And if you could please raise your hands and state your name and address. For the record, we would be most appreciative. Yes?
So, my name is Muhammad Mirmar on 19 Lydger Farm Drive. I guess it's, I have a question more about policy. So, is it part of the policy whenever something, you know, like what happened, you know, back in February and then in May? Is it part of the policy for the superintendent to report it to you, to the school committee? And then, is there, is there then an action that you guys, you know, then, you know, are put in a position to make? Or, you know, are you like unaware of these things, and it just like, it kind of springs up, you know, just like, you know, when, you know, like things at the micro level that are happening, like, you know, like the event that occurred in February, May?
It depends on the situation.
So, in this particular situation, this...
And I really can't answer. The school committee is aware of parts of the situation that we are legally able to hear about, but other parts are kept, are kept private.
But if it's a protocol question on when you guys are notified, I think that's the question.
Yeah.
Well, obviously, this became, this became a legal matter, and...
So that's when you were notified?
Yes.
So you were notified in May?
In May.
Yes.
Okay, so you're unaware before May, okay.
Does anybody else have a question?
Yes.
Yes?
Rob Johnson, 17 Lydger Circle. I just want to understand who, which body or which person would be responsible for removing the superintendent from her position?
And we're not going to talk about that as a personnel matter, but does the school committee... Just a minute, let me finish, but the school committee is in charge of hiring and discharging a superintendent. Yes?
It's actually printed out, is, and we put this on our website last year to help people understand what the role of a school committee is and what the superintendent duties and responsibilities are. So, a lot of other districts have this on their website, and to help the community, again, understand the roles, responsibilities, by law, it's outlined on this paper. It's really helpful just so you understand sort of about our roles, responsibilities, that we can only discuss things, you know, in a public meeting, that type of thing. So I, there's several copies of this. If you'd like to take it...
It's on the website, too.
It's on the website as well.
Yeah.
It's, it's on our tab, I think, under Documents or...
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it's on our homepage.
No, it's on the school committee tab.
No, no, not on the page. It's on one of the tabs, on the school committee for sure, though.
Well, I think there's pretty, I'm sorry.
Your name and address, please.
Wendy Newher, 92 Aaron River.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think there's pretty wide consensus that people feel that the lack of communication in the community was not what it should have been. And there's also great concern about the fact that, once things were discovered, there didn't seem to be enough adequate response to students to find out the impact of what students had been impacted, what students had not been impacted, um, sort of...
Once, once there was...
I didn't quite finish that.
Sorry.
And then on top of that, in addition to all of that, the fact that we didn't really address this as a community until our recent meeting with the superintendent. And at that time, I, I would have thought as a community member that we would have all been brought together and said, okay, it had gone up in February. We didn't do anything about it till May to report it, but this is what we're doing now. This is what we have done. This is what we're going to do. And I didn't hear anybody at that meeting that felt that that had been done. And as a result, there were so many of us that felt like, why? Why has that not been done? Why have our students not been prioritized first? Why did the superintendent come to the meeting with her lawyer? And it seemed like more of a, I need to be more conscious of how I am being protected rather than how our students are being protected.
I think that perception is, is, can be dangerous. The lawyer in question is the school committee's lawyer, not the superintendent's lawyer. She looks after us. It is an ongoing investigation with the police and with the Attorney General's office, I mean, the district attorney's office. We cannot speak about these items because we can, if we divulge anything...
Everything that I just talked about is something that you can talk about because it's a policy issue.
Right, but you're asking why the lawyer came, and I'm explaining why the lawyer was there.
No, not particularly. I'm saying that she did come, and as a result of her coming, it looked as if it was more in the defensive mode than, rather than a, a what can we do to help our community respect it? It looked very defensive.
Well...
And for, for us as parents, that's disturbing.
They're kind of separating the issues here.
They are.
I mean, I think, I think they're, I don't think it's an either or. I think, I think I'd separate those two things out.
Yeah, there, there are multiple issues.
Absolutely.
It's, it's not black and white.
Yep, I agree. And I think saying, well, the superintendent had a lawyer that, or didn't have, but actually wasn't the superintendent's lawyer again, but there's a lawyer there because at this point in time, it's become a legal issue.
Absolutely.
So you would want to have a...
It's, it's a scary time.
Yes.
I imagine it's scary for all of you.
So, you would want to have a lawyer there for the other, so that's separate from addressing the student issue. That's a different topic.
Right.
I think...
Well, the chief of police was the person who first stood up and gave the most information to the group, and as a result of doing that, I think we all got information a lot quicker than prior to that point at that meeting. And I think that that is also a sort of a sand commentary of what is happening in our community, that the chief of police is the source of information about our schools. And as much as I don't take that wrong, because I love the chief of police, he's great, and I really appreciate the work he's doing, but the schools should be our source of information, it seems like, about the schools.
Right, and we were in the process of putting together information at that time, and the police chief released his statement first. It was supposed to be a coordinated...
You had February, and then you had May.
It was supposed to be a coordinated effort.
You had February, and then you had May, and then...
We didn't have February. We didn't have February.
September. So, there was a long time before information was released to the community in an appropriate way.
Okay, I want to give somebody else a chance. You've already spoken, so...
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Just, I just wanted to add one more really quick thing, just about communication. I've been out on the soccer fields, I've been out at events, I've talked to a lot of parents, so I think communication is a key thing. We are hearing that needs to improve, so I hear you on that. But that's definitely something, I think, moving toward that, we are hearing you on that.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Paul Gray, 25 Lydger Road, and I live at Pennsyl School. And in regard to last week's meeting, I would ask that, just to force a situation. I understand...
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I understand you can't speak of legal matters along those lines, but I'm quite confident most of the people left this meeting, or last week's meeting, and I apologize, not feeling too well about it. And I, for one, would throw a great doubt to the board, a vote of no confidence in the current administrative leadership. It was offensive, it was posturing, and it left us with no information. If I had put my hand up, I'd be fed your...
All right, we're not, we're not talking about personnel matters. No more comments about personnel matters, please.
But I think when you, when you do that, you again set the same attitude that happened last week. And I think if, if you want to approach this as a community trying to get back in touch with the school committee that's taking care of our children, I think that kind of attitude and that kind of, kind of like how you just addressed him and how you addressed her, it's not going to be conducive to kind of reestablishing that. You're just relighting the fire that occurred last week. So just my advice to you is just to kind of like, imagine that this is not a typical school committee meeting. This is a meeting after, after we find out from the newspapers that our children are not being taken care of by a person who you're not willing to talk about. It's a person, you respond that it's a personnel matter. This is abnormal, so you need to kind of also readjust that this is not, this is not the same school committee I attended in August and July and June. This is different, and I think you need to approach this differently. Because we're not approaching this as like, you know, we're like getting updates on mission statements that the principal, you know, like the last meeting I came to, the principal, Conley, gave a mission statement on being a, what's it, global citizen, all these things. And these are things, this is the same person kind of, you know, like just turned her back on a person who was just like sexually abused. So, so you need to, you need to approach this differently, just my advice to you.
This gentleman has his hand up.
Rick Shifman, 107 Sawyer Street. Listen, I, I understand legal constraints and being in a difficult position. I also can tell you that for every parent that showed up here tonight, there are 10, 15, 20 that weren't able to show, show up or... And the community sentiment around the management of the school system with regard to this issue as well as other issues is incredibly negative, and the community needs to be heard. And the school board represents the community, so the school board can either vote it out of office, or you can listen to the community. I would encourage you to find a forum and a manner for the community to express itself openly to you, so you can act on our instructions as our representatives. And this may not be the forum, but the community.
Okay, are there any other comments? Yes?
So I understand...
Your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, thank you for saying that. Patricia Smith, 6 Lydger Farm Drive. I understand that the DCF report came out in end of June, beginning of July, citing that Carolyn Conley and the Cohasset Public School in negligence. And, you know, curious why Carolyn was still here in September, considering her name was in that report. And as well as, you know, in my...
We can't, we can't talk about that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
But in general, the school is found negligent. I've, I've been told by DCF that there's only one other school in Massachusetts that's been held negligent in the last year, and we're one of them. So now we have two, and Cohasset's one.
So you've spoken to DCF, and they, they disclosed that information to you? Okay, all right, thank you.
But no, so no answer?
Well, they could maybe come at the weekend.
Right.
It's concerning that, you know, our school is found in neglect.
Trust me, there are a lot of things that we would like to be able to discuss with the public, and we can't. There are a lot of things we don't discuss, but...
So what can you discuss, like...
Yeah, the question that I posed, I didn't get an answer to, and originally was, I'm sorry, but I asked, why was there not a rollout of information? This is what we do in a sexual assault situation. This is what we do when, when we need to report sexual assault. This is, why were those things, why was there not like a massive campaign on that?
To educate?
No, I really can't answer that.
Well, you need to answer it, because it needs to happen at the school now.
Well, I think that, I think that there has to be maybe another meeting to discuss that, but...
That's what we were told the last meeting. They said we were equate to the next meeting.
Can you not answer that legally, or you can't answer that because it wasn't done, and you don't know why it wasn't done? I'm not sure what you're saying when you can't answer that.
I don't know, I'm not understanding the question.
Are you taking the Fifth Amendment, like, are you, you feel like, you feel like there's self-incrimination by answering that?
No, not at all.
Okay, so then what's the reason?
Not at all.
You're not answered. Is there a policy that says you cannot answer that?
But your mandatory reporting didn't, did not take place, so we need to know, there needs to be an education process about mandatory reporting, A, and B, there needs to be a response of what, to allow the community, the students to understand, what's, what does sexual assault look like? And what is it, how is it to be recognized? What do you do? Who are the safe people to report to? And why, the we as a community went to that September, the last meeting with the superintendent, and there wasn't that in place to be able to say, this is what we are doing, this is what's rolling out? I just flabbergasted that that hasn't already been done, and that's why I asked personally, I said, why has the superintendent not been fired over this? Why has this not already been addressed in a way to say, if you haven't done that, why not?
We are not talking about firing anyone. It's a personnel matter.
Well, as a community, we are. We are. So whether or not you are going to allow that to be said, and the community is discussing it.
So, so as a hypothetical, okay, since...
People have their hands up, Mr. Mirmar.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
So, relating...
Name and address, please.
Oh, Ron Woolley, 28 Hillside Drive. I'm concerned, like, there definitely is a pretty big tension here, but even more concerning is the, the tension that is in the middle school and the high school, where my son came home and was really confused, where he's like, the message we're getting is to not talk about things that scare the hell out of us. And I didn't know what to say to him. I was like, you can always talk to us. And he's like, that's not what they say. They say, don't talk about it at school. And, and whatever your legal reasons, or whatever your policy, or protecting your position, that you can't talk about it here tonight, that's something between the adults. But to have that as a policy in a school to say, when faced with a crisis, don't talk about it, that's what the kids are taking, and I think other parents will agree. And that's outrageous. That's why child behavior plays in the adult's balance. We don't talk about scary stuff happening in the building.
We need to stop, because this meeting will not turn into what last, the last meeting was.
Provide information so that doesn't...
Just one moment, please, let me speak. There was an assembly for the children in the middle school and the high school. I was not there, I'm not an employee. However, Dr. Sullivan was, so maybe he could explain to you?
Yeah, I can actually speak to it, because I was for, I was there for all of the, all three of them. And I think one of the important things to remember is that for the middle high school, this was a shock for them to know that their principal was put on leave, and it just happened the evening before. So the first goal of the administration was to inform the students of that. The second goal was to make sure that they knew they had a trusted adult that they could talk to. The third goal was to make sure they knew that they were safe in the school, that we were going to, to move forward in a way that made sure that we, we attended to our normal routines, and that we get on with the day, and that it would be okay. It, I'll just say, you know, service received very well at the meeting, and we also made adjustments. So where the decision was made to address the, from Assistant Principal Scott, to address the whole high school, we addressed the middle school grade by grade because of the age level, and we were able to make adjustments as we went. So what I can say confidently and assuredly is that great efforts were made to make sure that those messages were heard, and I feel terribly if they weren't, but they were.
And just as an educator myself, I understand the difference between intentions that adults have and impacts they have on children.
Right.
And the intentions that the school had may have been to make the kids feel safe, but the kids, like, and this is, like, I spent the weekend with the Boy Scout event, and the kids were like, we didn't get what we needed. You know, that there's a definite sense that, that it was like, don't talk about this. And that, that seems to be across the board. So I look at that as a teacher, and as a failed lesson.
Well, I'm hearing that.
And times to go back to the, you know, start...
And another thing as a teacher is that you take input, and that you reflect, and that you make it better. And our staff has been making sure we've done that. We met as a staff at the end of the day, we talked that through, and we're progressing as a staff to make sure that our students do get what they need and that the correct message is heard. So I, I personally feel badly if that's what was, was felt by the students, but I, I do say that I was in on the planning, I, I knew what they were saying, I heard what they were saying, and I was, we were all working together to adjust the message. So, I, I, point taken, I do hear that.
Thank you. Jamie Sueback, 62 Spring Street. I appreciate your willingness to hear that feedback, because parents were feeling so frustrated about this that me and other parents started a Facebook page so that they could put their, their opinions out there in a positive way. So we could understand from, not just from coming and hearing one student come home and say, oh, this is what they said at school, but to hear as a collective what our students are being told and what, how they're hearing it. And that really was the message that any, there were several people that did, posted publicly, and also PMed and said their kids came home and said they were told, don't talk about this. So it's unfortunate, and I hope that that gets better. But what is becoming very clear to me, and has been through this process, is that this school district is ill-equipped to deal with this issue at hand and to move forward with it. And I want to know what experts you're working with in order to do so. I know the CAC is involved, but that's just step one. What other experts are involved in this?
Well...
So who's going to say?
Well, again, I felt, I felt that was my, I would defer to my superintendent or to the school to answer that. I don't think it's my role in the district to do so.
Yeah, anybody can answer it.
Okay, all right. So, one thing that we're doing is we've had, we have undertaken an independent investigation to review our policies and the procedures that are followed. Again, there's an additional PD scheduled in October, which is in addition to the items that Mrs. Marr outlined earlier, just to, for beefed up, for lack of a better word, 51A training, just to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, so that every employee in this district understands what their role is when something like this happens. All staff, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. We have reached out to the Cohasset Police Department to, to ensure that we're partnering in communication, and that that communication is open and ensures student safety. We are also working with, sorry. We're doing, we have somebody who is doing a Title IX investigation. We have, I already said that we were doing the independent investigation, and they're also going to look into the MOU that we have with the police to ensure that we're all working collaboratively in the efforts to keep our kids safe.
So that, that's all great. What about in an effort of prevention and education for the students? That's, I understand that right now the focus is on the mandated reporting, the investigation, and making sure that that doesn't happen again, which is a very important piece to this.
Right.
But there's another huge piece, the fact that, you know, nobody says the word sexual assault or sexual violence when talking about policies around sexual assault and sexual violence is indicative of how we as a community are viewing this issue, that no one will even say those words. So I think that we really need to figure out a way and talk to the experts, which there are plenty of them in Massachusetts, that can help this school and this district figure out a way to do this better, and that has to be done.
We all, we do also have new wellness curriculum, and we have teachers who are dedicated to deliver that curriculum to the students. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I mean, I think what you're saying that's going to be incorporated, for sure, it's all getting looked at. I, I know in the health curriculum specifically, they do address some of the things you're talking about.
What they didn't, I'm sorry, what did they have?
In the, the grade seven health curriculum, it is, um... Sorry, too many pieces of paper.
Yeah, no. We had a printout.
I had a printout of it. I had, I had the section in grade and grade seven. The one, the, the topic for health is, includes, but it's not just sexual harassment, date rape, acquaintance rape, Patrick and Franny's people look better to it. But it covers those topics in grade seven that is part of our health core.
So just so you guys know, using those terminologies antiquated. So the fact that you're saying things like date rape is an, is antiquated.
I, I said, I don't know if that's exact, because I can't find my notes.
And, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I realize you're, you're trying to answer the question. But I'm trying to raise the issue that we need to do better around this. Like there, we, the world of sexual violence is a hundred and fifty million light years from where Cohasset's whole district is.
Yes.
Maggie White, thirty-three Ledger Drive. I'd like to address the counseling that was provided to the students in May as well as what was said, I believe, after we met with the students, that there was going to be counseling after Ms. Conley was given leave. And so I'd like to address, was this counseling that was provided in school only, or did you bring in outside sources? And were the students aware? Because I have two schools, two children in the school, and they were not aware of any counseling taking place in the building because truthfully, they don't trust any administrator at this point or any teacher to go to. And so that is very concerning as a parent, that they don't feel that there's any adult in the school, teacher, staff, that they can go to freely. They feel that coming off of your, the meeting that you guys had, that you talked about with the students, they don't, they feel lack of confidence. So I'd like to know, was there at any point, and where were these counselors? Because I can tell you right now, being that at the time of, in the spring, I had three girls in the school. Now I have two. There's, there was no one that I, I was aware of. So I'd like to address that as maybe you could put that into policy that in the future or bring people in, that there should be an outside source, given the fact that it happened within, you know, the administration or within teachers. Because right now, I, there's lack of confidence coming from the students feeling that there was no help. There's nothing that they can go to.
And if we just leave it for grade seven, that's where we're not helping the rest of the population.
It's not just in grades, it's not just in grade seven. It, it carries through each year, the curriculum.
So, Gina, can I, can I just, can you possibly or somebody address, what was this counseling that was provided that the students could possibly go to? And who was it? Because I, it was in, it was in Ms. Conley's letter in May, and it was also out there as well. So I'd like to kind of know. I mean, I, I, I think it's important. And if you don't know, just say you don't know. So at least the, the question can be answered in the future.
I'll just say the message that was delivered at the, at the meeting was that you could talk to a trusted adult. It wasn't about extensive counseling.
Okay, but in Ms. Conley's original letter back in May, to us parents, said there'll be counselors on hand. Who were these counselors? Can anybody address that?
That was in house, was it not?
Well, I, I, I ju, I'm just speaking to what was said at the meeting.
Right, right, right.
We did, we did not address outside counseling.
Okay, so I was just saying, I, I'd just like to be clear that it wasn't enough because the students don't feel that they can go to anybody. There's a lack of trust. And I, I really want to bring that point home, that if they don't trust you guys in the building, you need to bring outside sources. And maybe you still need to bring them in.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Di Ma, nineteen, Di Ma, nineteen, let us contact. I think, my first issue first, I want to say that I have two high schoolers and two middle schoolers. And the high schoolers came home pumped from Mr. Scott's speech, and they said it was so uplifting and they were inspired. And like even my son, who obviously is the glass half empty, was really inspired and everything. So I think that speaks of the high school assembly. However, the middle schoolers, I have to agree with Ron, both my kids, both have different personalities. Both came home saying it was a waste of time. We didn't understand anything. They just kept telling us, we're in control. And my son's like, the only thing I'm in control is what's inside my lunchbox at school. That's it. So he said, it didn't make sense. We didn't understand. And my other concern is, I think it's very, very vital that football coaches and that the coaches at school address the boys and make them understand the profa, the profound impact of, of what they, how they behave and how they act with girls. Because, like, I don't want to mention names, but you can tell how different the reaction of what happened among the football team and among the older boys at school versus the rest of the kids and mostly girls at school. And you can tell that there is, especially with what we see on TV and everything that's happening with the hearings and the Supreme Court and all that stuff. Now is the time we make sure that our boys understand very well how to respect girls, how to respect women, how not to say things that in twenty eighteen they're still saying. They're not like, oh, someone is misguided. Maybe she wants attention, maybe whatever. The coaches need to understand this because our kids look at the coaches as if they're gods on earth. So it's very important that the coaches understand this message and deliver it to the boys. Now they're at, like, they're high schoolers. Now is the time where they go to college and start doing the thing so they don't end up in court one day, the Supreme Court, and...
Okay.
With no calendars.
You're going to take one more comment and then a closing public comment down.
My wife went through this school system twenty something years ago. And I agree that we do need to address with our boys how to be respectful. And, and, and if that means the coaches need to know how that they talk to boys, if the boys learn that, that's what... But if we're going to talk about the culture and the culture in this town, the bigger problem that I've heard consistently from my wife who went through this school, from her friends who went through this school system, some of whom left and went to private schools, from my friends in my neighborhood who sent their daughters to private school, is just as much a problem with the, the mean girl mentality than it is with the, the frat boy mentality. I'm not saying that frat boy mentality doesn't exist. I'm sure it does because the fifteen to eighteen year old boys, and they don't know any better yet. And we need to teach them. But there is a mean girl mentality in this town too. And if we're going to talk about the culture and what needs to be changed, that needs to be changed.
I was going to suggest that it's not just, it's not just the boys that need lessons. It's the girls too.
It's cool.
So, it's cool. Yeah. Absolutely. Okay, so, um...
I just have a final question.
Do you have a, is it something on a different subject?
Someone.
Okay.
No, I understand that you're bound by legality, but when the answers come, and you get the answers, the picture works. How are we going to find out? Who do we go to? Not the school board, not the superintendent. Who do we go to? And how will that information be relayed?
Okay. The school committee lawyer is here, and maybe she could explain how that information gets disseminated at the end of the day? Yes, please.
I have only comment. Within the bounds of, of confidentiality, obviously, the district will share results of investigations. But I do have to caution you, as I did last time, they do have to recognize certain individuals' rights of confidentiality and information. So to the extent that the information can be shared, it will be shared, and it will be shared in a timely manner. Obviously, this issue is priority one, and this is a matter of, of great interest that needs to be disseminated.
My question is how will it be shared?
I would imagine that at a future school committee meeting, it will be discussed.
But not everybody who comes to a school can help.
Okay. Well, I'm sure there's other ways that they can personalize how to get the information out.
One question. Are the performance evaluations of teachers and administrators considered confidential?
All except those that the school committee hires and fires.
So therefore, for example, if the school committee hires the superintendent, that person's performance evaluations are public record and we can see them?
Can I, can I just say one thing? I'll answer that. The superintendent is evaluated in public, in a school committee meeting. It, it's televised.
Yeah, it's televised.
It's televised. It's all public.
Annual.
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 We see that process?
Well, no, there's a cycle. It just, it's like, there's a cycle of evaluation. There's a midpoint where you check in and, you know, see how things are going and...
I would, I would encourage you, I would encourage you to go online and see if you can find the video of that, that meeting and see exactly what this superintendent has brought to this district over the last two years.
When is the next cycle, when it comes up?
When is what?
The next cycle of it.
June. May, June.
So we got a waste of time.
Do you want to wrap that up?
Yeah, I think the public comment is... No, it's not. I would be remiss if I didn't always mention, everything would be better. Everything would be better if school started later. The kid's health, the kid's social, emotional well-being, the car lines, everything. Everything would be better if school started later. I sent you an email. It couldn't get on this agenda. I'm crossing my fingers that it will get on the next agenda. Well, we will, we will have a conversation about that. We'd all be much smiling and be happy. Yes, agreed. Okay, um, sorry. Okay, so public comment is over. Yes.
Okay, I, I just wanted to thank you for coming. Honestly, I do appreciate, I appreciate hearing from parents. I think we all appreciate hearing from parents. Honestly, I wish I heard from parents more consistently over the year because maybe we wouldn't be having this conversation here now as we are. If there was more, could be more regular input. I, I mean, I'm not saying this in a negative, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is please talk to your administrators at your buildings, talk to your school committee members, because you can achieve a lot of change if you do.
If we were able to achieve that change without coming to a school meeting, do you think we would be here?
Um, I...
We would like you to come to our school committee meetings.
No, I think when you see the change you want to make, I think it can happen. And I'm just, I'm just saying, it's great.
That's definitely not the case.
Okay.
This district has a very, very long track record of not, of not respecting what parents think and, and what they're responding to, what, what they're, how they're feeling. We have a very long track record of that going on.
I think there's probably been some that has been and some that hasn't, but I think just staying involved and engaged can, can only help.
This engagement might happen because of lack of communication as well. So...
Okay.
Are the meetings televised?
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
Which one?
Twenty-two is Comcast, and I don't know the other one.
I think thirty-six.
Thirty-six, maybe on Verizon.
And they're usually archived on, if you go to the town website, you have the video link.
I know. They're, they're slow in uploading.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they're, they're slow in uploading, but they are there.
We don't, we're not in charge of that, and we've asked them to please upload and...
Right.
Okay, before you end, I, I still have the unanswered question of what is being done for our children right now? And as far as how to respond to children about a sexual assault?
I am not an expert on that. The people in the buildings, the people in the buildings...
I think, I think, I think it's updating, reviewing, and if, I think that will get discussed on administration of, maybe that's going to happen.
Well, I think it's a...
That's a leadership issue that will be discussed in leadership meetings.
It was February and then Mar, May, and now it's October. You're waiting way too long to be responding to a situation of critical importance.
We're eight months removed from the incident.
Well...
We hear you.
We absolutely hear you, and we are just as frustrated. We are frustrated also.
I doubt you're as frustrated as we are.
Well, I'm a parent.
Can I add this one, one, one last thing to communication advice?
Okay, I, I think we need to move on. We need to be...
I just want to say one last thing to communication. And this is, this is not a question, but, but the, the way the last meeting ended was there was a lady who stood up and advised the superintendent on email to send out...
Certainly.
Uh, sorry, sorry. To send out an email just to inform people that, that Principal Conley was on leave. And then her response was, but I, I already just told you guys. Okay? So I think that, she, she's like, her, her message was, I just, I just, I just told you guys. So you guys spread the word.
And the message did go out.
It, but it did after she pretty much transcribed exactly what she should say and, and fast forward, no, no, the, the, the advice is getting there. Forty-five minutes later, the pretty much exact wording that the lady said ended up coming from the superintendent. I think one of the things you should hold the superintendent's feet to the fire is, and maybe your, your own feet to the fire, is communication. You guys have to get ahead of these things. This is like communication one-on-one. This is like just, you know, PR one-on-one. You don't let the, you don't let the Cohasset Mariner, you don't let, you know, the, the kids, you don't let news, news channels deliver your message. You send the message first, okay? And then if, by that, you, you build the relationships with us because whenever we hear from other people, we're like, wait a minute, wait a minute, why aren't we hearing from you? And second of all, it just shows that, you know, we're on the same team. And it's so far, it still doesn't feel we're on the same team. And I think you need to do the work to make us feel we're on your team because we kind of assumed we're on the same team. You know, we're like a bunch of idiots, you know, us, parents, on the right, assuming we're on the same team. And we just like, you know, we just got punched in the face with, with, with what happened. And, and it just, you, this is, this is on you guys to kind of unpunch us and kind of teach us that going forward, you guys learned the lesson. Just today's meeting, it doesn't seem you guys are kind of owning up to anything or saying you learned the lesson. And if, if you guys ended it the way where you just kind of said that we acknowledge this happened, we acknowledge this happened, kind of whatever you can legally do without kind of incriminating yourself, at least just make us feel, I think it just would send like a positive vibe between this side and that side and not make two sides anymore. That's just my advice to you.
Thank you.
Andrew, not good.
I, I just wanted to say one thing. I went to the superintendent coffee and, this morning, and I think a little bit more information was there and it, and I feel better about stuff that I was informed of at the superintendent coffee.
Thank you.
I don't know if any of that gets...
How are the rest of us supposed to hear that?
Yeah.
We didn't know. The notes that come into...
Usually after, usually after that something gets sent out, but there was a lot of informa, and you were there, Bart, but there was a lot of information that I think would...
Right.
It was informative.
Right. The notes do come out, and I can share some of it with you if you are not able to be there. I will be more than candid to say the criticism is so high that had I sent these notes today, it would have been misinterpreted. So I will share them with you, and it includes your helping me and coming together as a group. Do with that as you may. The crisis team met, uh, has been meeting. The crisis team is built from building-based crisis teams. That's no high school. And that's teachers, guidance counselors, psychologists, administrators. And what they did, and Dr. Sullivan sat in on those meetings, was to look at the pulse of the children's well-being and what did we foresee and how did we go out into the building and find out outliers? How did we know those? Who did we have? Who did we speak to? Who did we send to? I spoke to Dr. Green myself to try to get some advice. She has worked with us in Safe Harbor. We had, we also did the pulse of the faculty. We have a faculty that's hurt. We have an environment that's somewhat fractured, and we know that. It's been a tough time for all of them. We look at the well-being of our staff. Who are those outliers? Some of them are, are hurting badly. They're carrying their job. They're teaching well. They're very qualified people, and they want the best for your children. We're all in that together. And the message was, if we're together, we get something done. If we bang each other up, we'll get nowhere, and our victims are our children. So that's our message when we get together as a leadership. And that was the same message when I met with Chief Quigley, the resource officer and the administrators this morning. We also have the, the creation of a safe school committee, and that safe school committee has a mission. It's the coming together of interested parties to guarantee that our schools are safe and our children are supported from, from a social, emotional perspective. Along with Dr. Sullivan's work and the work of the leadership, that is our priority. The steering team for this committee includes a school, school committee member, at least one, parents, particularly parents, the Metco director, the Safe Harbor Coalition director or designate, social worker and counseling service, possibly students, something to be discussed when the committee comes together, and other resources as the committee sees beneficial. And that is reaching out to some of the very things that some of you who are very constructive and sent me emails and said, can you look into this? The responsibilities for the committee are to review current policies, our legal guidelines, the procedures regarding safety operationally, school procedures, and overall communication between the schools and the community. It's to create a wide network of safety resources, to reexamine the function and the role of our Title IX responsibilities, to review and revise the staff-student incident reporting process, to make a primary goal of the district leadership team to review protocols, policies, and procedures. It is the responsibility of the safe school committee to recommend changes, and it is that same committee that will review and revise what we already have as a safety plan that seems, although very adequate, very effective in great emergencies of the physical nature, need to look at some of those that you've just described as more of an emotional. Until the committee meets and organizes, which will be very soon, yesterday we had a long discussion on highlighting Metco. Our Metco program, our Boston partnership, which is going in... Our MECO program, our Boston partnership, which is going into its 50th year, to look at what do we do to support those students, and, and those who were there can attest, the discussion became much deeper, and it did involve mean girls, and it did involve subtle meanness and unacceptability and finding one's inner voice. Those were all things that came out during this meeting. Unfortunately, it's in the morning, and our next meeting is going to be in the evening, and it ran so long, it was an hour and twenty minutes in, in length, that we decided that very soon, when the director of MECO, who did an incredible job in speaking about accepting one another, looking at our staff, looking at the diversity, not just in color, but in stature, economic, beliefs, academic, any sort, that our next conversation will take that turn, that will be in the evening, so more people can attend. What we've done in the meantime is that the leadership has the update with advocacy for children mandated reporting. We assure that all staff is current. We changed monthly reports that come to me from the buildings to include data. It's an entire data sheet. I'm get, I, I get a pulse on what the severe discipline issues are and what the staff reporting is, what 51As are considered, and what the result is. I get a duplicate copy. We establish a shared document for keeping and mentioning all, any comment that had to do with a staff member and a student, regardless of how minor or how major. We established a relationship with the police chief and the SRO to include parents. Bill Quigley and I have met probably at least once every day for the last six days. We also talked about our memorandum of understanding has expired. That includes, including us in the reports that the police have and our relationship with them. We've decided we want to include parents in that and to look at what are you looking for, for safety for your children? What is it that we've missed? We have the attorney general's outline on what is required of our, what we call a memorandum of understanding of partnership. But we want to include and review it. We're looking to the feasibility. I have someone researching the acceptance and policies that include therapy dogs. Seriously trying to get that. Today, we had a meeting of several of you who were there, along with Chief Quigley and Sergeant Lopes, on looking at a text tip. The discussion was the more ways we can have our children connect and communicate, we were going to enforce that. The chief has sent out more work for all of us as him. He is working presently in his home to build that grant. Someone has volunteered working with CEF if the grant needs to be there. We will educate as a school how students can use their phones and text those, those important messages that they feel uncomfortable and adequate checking with adults.
Is that anonymous?
Yes, yes. And it will be a 24-hour line. And that, incidentally, was something we heard from parents, that Bill informed me over the weekend that that was going on. He asked if we should embark on that, and my response was the better communication we have, the more communication areas that we have, the better. You were there today, I think it was a very profitable, very honest, candid communication. We establish a group to include interested parents and guardians to review that SRO relationship. We addressed the reorganization of leadership for the middle and high school discussions with Mr. Scott. Mr. Scott is in the process of discussions with me as to take the role of acting principal with a replacement for him temporarily as well, as assistant, so that we can move forward. And I probably should, a little premature, the staff needs to hear that, but that we're looking at the leadership and how we go forward. How do we communicate effectively? How do we not? We're looking to both of these investigations and say, what are they saying? What do we need to do? And I certainly plan to include all of you. I understand your anger, I understand you, it would be easy for me to walk into that, my car, and never come back. But I don't think that solves one thing, it creates a much bigger hole and a much bigger problem at this point in time.
Is there a search that's been started?
For?
The principal's position?
The principal is on leave, she is not dismissed, so there isn't a search. There is just a filling. But we need somebody, we need somebody in charge.
I've just heard some things over the last two meetings that are so disturbing to me. It seems your attitude in a crisis, and your approach in a crisis.
Stop, stop right now, Mr. Johnson, no.
Well, if you have to fork committees and to, and to put the onus on somebody else to make a decision.
That, stop.
In leadership, you lead for a crisis.
We are not doing this in this meeting.
And I would put to the board that.
That's enough.
Criminal investigation aside, there is a ton of evidence that she is incompetent and has drawn, and is accountable.
No, more, that's it.
I'm leaving.
Thank you.
It's very clear what your attitude is too.
No, thank you.
It's, it's, it's great that we have a chair of the super school committee that's so interested in the well-being of this children.
All right.
Thank you very much, Ms.
Thank you guys all for coming, appreciate it.
I guess, just one comment, and I promise it's very short. If Louise had that information, and we've all been asking for that specific information, why wouldn't she put it out there? And why ask the same question over and over again? This woman here asked so many times, like, I understand the criticism and whatnot.
Which specific question are you talking about?
All the policies and the procedures that they have in place, I mean, all these exciting committees and everything that she's putting in place. That's what we've been asking about this whole meeting, that she's sitting on it, and it's pushed until someone brings up the superintendent coffee. I don't get it. That doesn't make any sense. We could have stopped this meeting 30 minutes ago, in my opinion. That's it, that's, that's just, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Okay. Can, can we, I'm so sorry, I don't want to keep this up, but I, I've said this a million times, I feel like, but it isn't being heard. Can we please provide resources to our students outside of school? Can we let them know where they can call now? I, I'm thrilled that there's so many things in the works, but that there's kids out there that need to call someone now. They need a hotline, they need a text line. There are so many out there, can we please provide these opportunities for students to reach out right now who might be struggling?
I think you need to give them a list. Because I don't think they know.
I'm happy to.
That's your.
Well, so, is Interface.
Interface.
And Interface is, is a town-wide.
But that's clinical matching, that's a clinical matching service for long-term therapy. That's not a crisis line. I work with Interface, they're a subcontractor where I work, so I work with them every day.
Trying to answer questions, honey.
Yeah, they're, they're just, they're not a, a crisis line.
So we're feeling like just providing the school adjustment counselor is not enough. And that's really all that's been done at this point. And none of the kids feel apparently, you know, motivated enough to be able to go to those people. So we're asking if.
Anything that looks.
Yeah, there are plenty of places that you can contact. And this, you know so many of them, so, I mean, and she's made herself a resource to use, so.
Well, the school district is used, is, is working also with a psychologist outside of the schools. And she is working with the superintendent, making recommendations, so it's, it's.
What's the name of the psychologist who is there?
It's Dr. Green, Dr. Green.
Barbara Green.
Dr. Barbara Green. From the Translations Center.
Can I just say? And you, you sound like she's.
So she's wonderful.
Yeah.
I know Dr. Green.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm a psychologist.
Sorry, right now. I just want to say, not about the decisions. We're, we're not in charge of the operations of the school.
Right, so.
No, no, I just wanted to say something. So, okay, sure, go ahead. One, and this is really the last comment.
Okay, I promise.
Wait, just, what's it? But, I'm sorry, I'm so, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm so sorry. But Dr. Green is not in, she's in private practice, so how are people going to get a hold of her?
She's, she's a consultant to the resources. She's a consultant, a resource to the schools.
What you're talking about, what she's talking about is having a hotline, some sort of thing that kids can have access to talk to. They can't call a, a doctor who's in private practice and say, can you talk to me right now? Can we bring somebody in?
I don't know, is that the question?
I believe so.
Can we bring somebody into the building?
That's the question.
The outside, is that what your question was?
No, just tell them. Just tell them all they can call.
Tell them who they can call.
They know in the school.
So give them a list of resources and other, okay.
That's it.
Let them know if they're feeling uncomfortable, they can do this. And maybe even for the parents, how to talk to their children about sexual abuse and what's going on. I feel like we're being thrown all this information and just, these are issues that we're not used to talking to our children about, and there's been no support for us. I think a lot of parents feel that way also, that how to bring up these issues at home is like, oh, have free dialogue with your children.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Maybe Dr. Green could be a resource for about that.
One more, just remember that, I know that Superintendent addressed the issue in middle school and how they're suffering. Just remember, there's children that went up from the middle school last year and now are freshmen in high school, and we need to cover them as well, and even maybe the staff that's, you know, the teachers, as I refer to staff, I mean it in general, the teachers and everybody, because they're hurting, and some of their peers in the upper grade, so it's not just the middle school issue that needs to be addressed, it's the high school. I'm sure you're aware of that.
Exactly.
But I did hear wording, I just wanted to clarify, because I did hear wording just middle school. So I just wanted to. Maggie, let me correct that though, because I believe it was Mrs. Omron said that your high schoolers came home and said that the message was great. Well, my high schoolers didn't feel that way, so if it's very obvious. So, so, but my point is that when Superintendent spoke just now, she just addressed.
Oh, sorry, that was Ms. Omron, that.
It was, you just addressed middle school, so I just wanted to just openly, she did just address middle school in her comment. At today's meeting, so I just want to make sure that it was concerned as well as the high school.
That was a mistake.
Okay, no, thank you. It's, it's all levels. I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just.
No, you're absolutely right.
Well, and just, not to keep going, but to be fair, we presented as a team, we were a team, okay? And I don't want to single out anybody who presented in those meetings as being more responsible. We were really trying to communicate as a team. So I just want to be clear on that, and I appreciate what he's saying, but that's, that's the fact, okay? Sorry, one more.
I was first, so. No, I'm sorry, we have, we have other business.
I'm not, I don't want to talk about this issue, it's another issue. It's up one minute. I've, Dema Omra, 19, Ledwood Farm Drive. I just want to say, just like now, we waited until an incident happened for us to meet about sexual harassment, there are a many number of kids. I've had to talk to four parents, I have four, two middle school, two high schoolers, about their kids thinking about committing suicide. Before, we had a committee meeting after an incident where, God forbid, someone does commit suicide. Let's address this issue because it is on the rise. I don't know if you guys have, I'm harbed with numbers, but I remember the survey they did either last year or the year before, the amount of kids who are considering this is, is crazy. And most of them are very accomplished kids, very high grades, they are, they're very, like, competitive, and this is a very, very, very important issue to address, so we don't have a crisis meeting after something happens.
Absolutely.
And I first said to the administration, I've had that in our own experience, and there seemed to be very little interest, and the lack of response or caring or compassion about it was mind-blowing. It was really, really extraordinary, I felt, the, what our family went through and how it was responded to as a result of what we were going through and what the school, how the school responded. I wouldn't want any other family to go through that. So this is a very serious issue, and I feel like this, this district has a sense of, that sort of thing doesn't happen in our ZINCO, we don't have those sort of issues, and just sort of like be quiet about it. And I can't tell you how I think that is just malpractice. It's just wrong.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, next we're going to move on to approve a warrant.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you for hearing us. Okay, go ahead, the motion to approve warrant 19-05S. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I, Barbara, second.
Hi, Jane Estino.
Hi, Ellen Mark.
Hi, Jen Martin.
Next is Superintendent's report.
Last time that we met, you had a presentation on all of the great scholarly accomplishments that our students had in AP courses and, and definition of achievement. We have a long, wonderful list that I'd like to read. Many of our students have already graduated, so we usually read the list. They've all been sent a congratulatory letter and a certificate from the district. We have AP scholars who were 2018, 19. They were granted to students who received a score of three or higher on three or more AP exams. AP exams are scored one to five, five being the top score. Three is usually the acceptable guideline for college credit in colleges. So they scored three in three or, or more of their AP exams. Chase Bromlizer, Turner Corribis, excuse me if I mispronounced that, Maximilian Davis, Jay Frederick, Noah Crowio, Oliver Pankia, Jenna Herman, Samuel Lemieux, Emma Loft, Margaret Lucia, Sean Mechelany, Sullivan Mulhern, Avery Nard, Emma Stevens, Diana Shirdy, Andrew Sullivan, Ann Toomey, Holly Van Eden, and Elise Libberly. We also have a different category, that's AP scholar with honors, and these are students who, they were granted an average score of 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scored three or higher on four or more of their exams. Nathaniel Arnold, Thomas Coffey, Lauren Cunningham, Samuel Gani, Liam Geier, Benjamin Healy, Jake Conscious, Rebecca Cristal, Matthew Lucet, Scott Lucet, Caitlin Patterson, Lucy St. Savour, Henry Thomas, Nathaniel Thomas, and Scott Wain. Then we just keep on going. We have those students who scored at least a 3.5 on all AP exams that they were taken, and scored three or higher on five or more of their exams. We have Grace Als, Madison Beach, Caitlin Conrad, Olivia Covany, Mary Crumley, Matthew Dickey, Brian Doyle, Michael Fletcher, Jillian Forrester, Patrick Hargody, Mae Humphrey, Kyle Federich, Emily Moy, Margaret Norton, Catherine Quigley, Deanna Raff, Josh, Josh Rosen, and David Tierney. Not often do we have the next category. There are many years where we do not, and they're an extremely distinguished award. It is granted to students in the entire United States who receive an average score of four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. And that is Matthew Dickey. So it's a very, very special prestigious award. So we congratulate them all. We also have a national merit program, National Merit Scholarship is the result of PSAT exam scoring. We have Niels Brogensen, George Gretsch, Jenna Herman, Rebecca Cristal, Scott Lucet, and Turner Martell. So we should be proud of having so many accomplished scholars and very proud of them. We also have a guest. We've invited Carrie Gashi, who is our associate principal. They had a day at Camp Wing, and we want to hear all of it, so if you. Getting it working.
So Carrie, if you want to pull up here. Now, we'll warm up, I swear.
If you want me to skip to the next slide while it warms up, we can do that.
Sure.
It's okay, now you have to wait. The next one is a private school enrollment roster, and that you have in front of you. Let me take a look at this. In our grade five to six, as you know, private schools have, in the last few years, accepted grade six and up. We have 10 students who, from grade five, have moved on to a private school. You have the list there. Actually, it's not ten. There actually is one who stayed in Cohasset. So there are nine. We have seventh graders, we have four of them, some of them attending Sweden. So I think it was too much of a travel. So actually, three who have left the district for area, areas, schools. The next in grade eight, we actually have fifteen who've gone to private high school. It's actually thirteen. Two of them have decided to stay in Cohasset. So that is your inventory of private schools for the year. It's about the same as we have in past years. It keeps the same kind of profile.
I don't want, it's actually a little bit lower than previous years.
It's usually lower. The middle school is lower than it has been.
I have on my last year's ones here and I was just giving a quick look, but the overall, I thought it was a little smaller.
Yeah, we have thirty-three.
It's interesting because the class is larger.
Yeah, right, right. So it's interesting to figure out on a percentage and a raw number, but anyway.
Are there any trends? Where are people going to? What are they seeking out that they're not getting here? Is there any analysis of it?
Yeah, there is, there is. And I don't have it with me, but there is, sometimes for religious reasons. Principal Conley's presented that last year. I think we have it in a document. A number of them are boarding schools. Notre Dame is somewhat there, B C High. Some of them go for athletics, some for religion.
Family tradition.
They do, yeah, they do exit into use with all the students, so she does have all of that.
Say across the board, B C High is the biggest.
Yep.
We see the most students heading out to B C High and a lot of times the parents or siblings are there.
Camp Wing.
So I say part one because we are going back to Camp Wing with the sixth grade, I believe it's May fourteenth. So this is part one. We went in September and I want to start with some of the, we got this information in the moment when we were at Camp Wing and then I had gone around to students since then and just said, hey, you know, what was your favorite part of it? And one student said the dance party when it started to rain. We were extremely lucky. The forecast for that day, and Camp Wing's the kind of place where it's set up rain or shine. But we were extremely lucky because the camp is, it's definitely far better when there's better weather. And the last, maybe twenty-five minutes of rain, the forecast cost for all-day rain. And we got through the entire morning, we got through lunch, we got through even the first of our two activities during the middle of our second activities. It started thundering and lightning before it started the rain. But we pulled all the kids in our, as soon as the thunder and lightning started, went aside and had a big dance party. So the staff is extremely talented with being able to, impromptu, make sure everybody's having a great time. So kayaking and looking for, they have a turtle, and I can't remember the turtle's name, but a famous turtle there that every time they take the kids out on the canoes or on the kayaks and they look, they look for, what is it?
I can't remember with my kids who go to camp. Big stories about this turtle.
It's their famous turtle.
It's a special turtle.
Yes. Climbing the wall and the, one of the reasons why they were super excited about it, or that was one of their favorite pictures is because they verbalized it when they first went up on the wall. The relay races and the student that was saying this to me looked at me and said, you were my partner. I was, I was the student's partner and I was part of that, that activity, part of that, that relay race. And I will say some of the kids were just like, we didn't realize you could run, Miss Agashi. And I'm like, yes, we do do other things. And I thought was really, really nice was singing on the bus. They sang on the way down and sang on the way back. And it was, for me, it was a nice special moment of the kids. I mean, some of the songs were, were songs about winter. I mean, and some of them, they even sang the wheels on the bus. I mean, so it was something that made me smile the whole way down and made me smile the whole way back. And one of the students said that they really enjoyed the archery part. So how it's set up is the, the entire group, sixth graders are broken up into teams. Can't remember how many in the teams. I want to say there was, I'd say fifteen to sixteen in each team. And I literally just went down the list and went one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, all the way to sixteen, then started one again, all the way to sixteen. So we broke up the groups before we got there because we were instructed to. But then once you get there, they call out the kids that are in those groups. They put them with a group leader and it was actually two, sometimes three group leaders. So the ratio ended up being like one to five, one to six, which was just fantastic. And then they go to different obstacles or different challenges. And it was the high wires. There was a challenge course. There was what was called the total team. It was climbing the wall. There's a survival. The canoe piece, the archery piece, and then kayaking. What's really nice is that we did four on the twelfth. And in May, when we go back, we're going to do the other four. So the kids will have exposure to every single one of these. They actually keep track of who were in the groups and what they've done. So when we go back in May, the kids who've done the top four will end up doing the bottom four and vice versa. Again, it's a really, really well-run place that really gears itself to having a dust party with kids. I was taking some snapshots and here's the impromptu dance party. And some of the kids getting their gear ready for, I don't remember if it was canoeing or kayaking. And we're gonna end with them sailing off into the sunset.
Thank you so much. Can they count you the days tonight?
They are.
Other piece of information you have in your packet is, believe it or not, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty's school calendar. It has been vetted by the Executive Board of the Cohasset Teachers Association and met with their approval. They do have input on how we construct things. One of the major changes that you'll find that's not usual is we added a day to the winter break simply because it seemed for them, and we took that as well, that December twenty-three would mean to open the school for a Monday. It would mean gearing up the heat and everything else. And for one day, we felt that families would probably prefer to have the full week. It was more prudent. So we do go the extra in, in June. And that was their recommendation. It seemed a good one. So that's really the only major. We tried to put also the second full professional development day off to the, I believe it's either late March or April, I'm looking at it now, later in the spring for that very reason that this winter was so harsh. Should we need that other full day, we could probably negotiate that with the union. So that was a recommendation last year also that families say, well, can you have professional development later? So that we have a day that we can play with. So we did do that. That's not to say we don't have an April storm, but. It's, I guess it's in later in March, the twentieth. Last year was much earlier. I think it was in January. And that January, February is so unpredictable. So that if we, we start getting hit with many of those kind of days that we had last year, we have options. We also have the other half-days to, we need.
Have we seen this before?
No. Does need votes? We try to do it very early because people plan vacations a year ahead for some times and.
Are they the same number of professional development days?
Yes, we do.
I do actually, I do have a question. Does anyone else have questions or no? So I just was curious about the April, like the month of April. I was just thinking that this last school year seemed to have a lot of PD days on different days and it sort of got confusing to, sometimes hard to get into a rhythm. I don't know if you heard that from any other perspectives, but. So I was trying to look at the calendar with that in mind and I was just wondering about April, where you have a sort of half a week, then a week, and then vacation and then you're back. I like that, some of the, it's sort of more consistent, PD on Fridays, which is more predictable. Like I know at my son's schools, there's PD every single Wednesday, every single one.
Hang on a second.
Yeah. But at the same, you just get used to the rhythm and it, you adjust. It's kind of nice for some things. But I didn't know if like the, maybe the half-day April one would ever looked.
The discussion was those storm days that last year crippled us to go so far into June. So the discussion was those were days that could still potentially be negotiated.
Yeah.
Should we find ourselves in that. May is the concert, all, all of those end-of-the-year activities that conflict.
Yeah.
It is also the.
And cats kicking him.
In June. So.
My question was really on that one weekend of April. I was like, oh, is that just gonna be like?
That is the Good Friday holiday weekend.
I knew that.
In Trenz has not been a well-attended two days at the end. It's, it's a getaway weekend, not a getaway.
I figured my question was sort of.
An obligation weekend with family.
Does Thursday, could Thursday maybe go to a half-day and then move that ninth full day to like in March, like March thirteenth or sixth? So that you kind of were keeping the Friday rhythm?
The issue is the full day in March is the twentieth, so we have two full days.
When you push it, potentially moving a half-day, but.
The seventeenth of April.
Going into vacation week.
Right. I can propose it to them. I'm not sure that it's accepted, but.
I mean, I was, I was kind of curious about what their feedback would be on it too. I mean, it's not the end of the world or anything. It just.
Yeah, I think the conscious effort was to try to preserve that end of June that was so disastrous where we had to make up the days and time.
Yeah, I just feel like margin. Okay.
Did notice the indication at the end also marks the hundred and eightieth day, which is the required by law.
Yep.
And the last day with the five snow days, but also the, this, the acknowledgement that the last allowable makeup day is the period just for planning purposes.
So we'll end up voting on this again once we do the school committee calendar because that will have to get notated.
Yes.
As well, so this is just the first draft.
Right. I don't know, I just look up.
If you want to hold on, there's no urgency. It's still early. If you want to bring it up again when you have a calendar for school coming up. It's still in draft.
Well, we won't have that till.
We won't have that, so.
We won't have that till May or June, so.
Do we want to approve this pending?
Well, just approve the first draft.
Yeah.
Or, or we don't, doesn't matter.
Okay.
What do you want, Barb?
What do you think?
I'd say just wait two weeks. If anyone does have a problem. Or do, is there some pressing reason to have this?
I don't know of any impending marriages or huge family trips yet. I mean, those are sometimes planned for.
Those are next.
Yeah, but this is still very early.
I mean, I don't think I'm gonna have a huge problem. I just feel like, I guess you all have had nine teachers, like from a teaching perspective, like.
This was the CTA.
This is.
Yeah, they liked it.
Alright, they like it then.
If in the event that they receive this and we get feedback, we can always come back.
Okay.
You want to hold it for two weeks, then I can send it up to teachers beforehand. What do you think?
What is the proposed start date for the?
The, well, again, we're, we're on, I think it's contractual, it's the third. September third, day after.
Still after, still after. I know a couple of years ago, I don't think it was last year, a couple of years ago, we talked about that. Notions starting before Labor Day.
There's a very strong feeling among the staff that beginning before, although it seems like a good idea, many families are still away. So the attendance.
No matter what we do, we make a mistake.
Yeah, no.
I want to be.
No, but other, other districts do start. I think once you get through that first hurdle of, oh my God, we're starting before Labor Day, then families become accustomed to it.
I think the other thing is we get a long weekend. So it's not just a three-day. They add, they built in another day. So you had two days of school, then you had a four-day weekend, and then you started school. I liked it a lot.
It's a soft start.
It's a soft start for the kids? Yep. And I like, I don't know, when I taught, I liked having two days or three days max of my weekend and then everybody has a break and then you kind of hop and running.
Okay, so what are we doing then?
That'd be my preference, but I think we're holding it.
Holding it for two weeks? Okay.
I don't see like being able to adjust the start date for next year would be too drastic for people, but see the. So that's the internal, it's the CTA.
To look at the contract language, I think it's, it's not contractual.
Surveying parents a few years ago when it was.
I don't believe so.
But I don't remember what it started, but it was not a, yeah, that's not really.
Well, the timing thing we have is like a day. I'm just like, I don't, I'm pretty sure we don't have a starter stop.
That covers my section.
Okay. So next is school committee goals. And I don't have, yeah, I don't, okay.
Okay, so I sent out a fifth draft.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I hope every, it should be in, we've got extra packets. It's draft number five and we did email it. So we can get through this and approve it. I think the only. Let's see where it changes.
Student achievement.
Yeah, and stu-, so student achievement, we had the most conversation on the third bullet point. And Barb came up with language to support efforts to increase tracking and assessment of tier-two and three interventions in order to maximize student achievement. Which kind of dovetails off Mary Buchanan's presentation the last time where she highlighted it as something she wanted, even though it's, Barb informed me, it's technically, technically not special education. It's something that she was cognizant of. But let's, in hoping that this is the last draft, let's just go through each goal and make sure that we're good. Okay, so the first one is human capital. Recruit, retain, and develop exceptional district leadership team teachers and staff. And our goal is to appoint a superintendent for Cohasset Public Schools for fiscal years twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Next is communication and collaboration. Creating vehicles to strengthen the communication and collaboration of the district leadership team, parents, town committees, and the citizens. Collaborate with capital budgets advisory board to select one town manager for capital budget requests in the FY twenty budget. Plan and promote two school committee coffees or workshops to engage parents in the community and the workings of the school committee. And the third was to establish a program to honor and recognize individual community members who selflessly give of their time or talents to support Cohasset students. Safety and security. Enhance the culture of security by strengthening the safety and security of school buildings and grounds. Our goal is to conduct a review with the school resource officer of the assessment done in two thousand and fifteen and update that assessment as appropriate. Finance, establish outline of immediate short-term, of immediate, short-term, and long-term scheduled facility improvements working with leadership, town manager, and facilities department. Review and amend if necessary the special education reserve fund policy. And then in student achievement, review the college selection and application process via educator spotlight. Gain insight regarding guidance services for students in order to optimize budget allocated to those services. The first goal. Second goal, support the action plan and recommendations of the middle school study group with budgetary support. Include the review of the teaming structure to assess the levels at which this initiative is most effective and beneficial to our students. And the third one, as I already read, so I'll repeat myself, support efforts to increase tracking and assessment of tier-two and three interventions in order to maximize student achievement. Establish a school committee member to the wellness committee, working with the superintendent and assistant superintendent, supporting initiatives and progress of the committee. And finally, establish a school committee member to the diversity committee in order to support the committee's initiative and goals for all learners in Cohasset Public Schools. So those are our goals for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, in draft.
Thanks for continually editing these. Does anybody have any comments? Barbara does. I see Penn.
That's okay.
I'm, I'm trying to think based on conversations we had tonight, do we want to adjust any of our communication and collaboration goals? Do they, or do you think they fall under? Or does that fall under us so much or?
Well.
I guess that's not us, it's not just operational.
I mean, we, we, yeah, it's. I mean, we, yeah, it's operational, but.
Okay.
You know, I kind of think the second bullet point kind of hits on that. You know, I think the more we can talk to parents and the community about what we do and how we do it, and how we weave in what we do with the district leadership, the more informed everybody will be, and the more we'll hear from parents and the community about how they perceive what we do and how it impacts them.
Does the wellness committee, would that be the final goal for getting information out about some of the things that we talked about tonight? I mean, could we add?
Yeah.
We have this wellness committee, but.
Well, I think the wellness committee is a town-wide committee, right? With the town nurse, I mean, it's all stakeholders in the town with an overarching wellness goal for not only our students and staff, but the whole community.
It also connects with our status with my, our.
With the insurance. Yeah. I think, I think for tonight's conversation, working with Barbara Green and Safe Harbor, which actually, I wish I remembered the date. I mean, there is, I think there is a team from Cohasset doing the walk down on the canal, the suicide event.
That was the twenty-ninth.
That was last weekend. Yeah. Yeah. They are delving into that part of social emotional wellness, even though the grant is specific to.
There is a presentation on Tuesday to. Elizabeth Englander.
Yeah.
And that's a partnership of the schools.
Yeah.
On bullying and.
And it's also a follow-up to screen agents.
Preachers follow-up and.
Digital safety.
Correct. And that's part of the plan between the administrators and Safe Harbor. Anybody else have comments?
No comments?
No comments. All right, so.
Kind of talked about it.
Do we have a motion to approve the Cohasset School Committee goals for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen?
Sorry, did you ask for a motion?
Yes, some of. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So then the next step for the goals is kind of an assignment. Some of them fall naturally to certain subcommittees, and some don't. And so we'll have to have to take a look at these and say, okay, well, who's, because some require, you know, who's going to do this, but like the program to honor and recognize individual community members. We need a program. We need an application process. We need criteria. We need a selection process. We need an award process. We need that. The, you know, finance, obviously, we'll fall to budget and finance subcommittee. So everybody think about, you know, what you want to tackle. And maybe not the next meeting, maybe the meeting after.
Sure.
We can say, okay, let's divvy these up.
All right, so we'll put that on the agenda for the meeting after next.
Unless everybody wants to do it the next meeting, it doesn't really make. So I'll send these out in final form as approved and ask Jennifer to post them on the website.
I just wanted, you know, the C E F wanted copies, so if we approve this tonight, could we send it to them?
Copies of our goals?
They do. They want copies of the goals.
Okay, the C E F does?
Yeah, they do. Yeah.
Okay, and we usually share them also with the board of selectmen?
The C E F uses the guidelines of the district goals and school committee. How they can support.
Right. Great.
Okay.
One of the recommendations today was to help support the text line.
Great.
And their meeting is October fifteenth, Monday night.
Are you going to be able to go to that?
I am. I'm planning to go, so I will, I'll bring a copy and.
Actually, Louise, if you could have Jennifer circulate this.
Circulate. Actually, she could make me a bunch of copies, and then I can.
Part of it.
Yeah, I think people would like.
How many copies? Just email her and tell her how many copies. If you have this electronically.
I do, yeah. It's a Word document.
If you send it to her, she can.
Multiply.
Does anybody know about how many people go to the C E F meetings?
Sometimes it depends on the topic and so on. I'll have them make twenty-five.
The C E F is a pretty large committee.
Great.
Is it a steering committee or a whole committee meeting?
It's twenty-five. If not, if it's not enough, we can only send them electronically. I can send one, two.
Send her the directions and she'll have them for you.
Yeah.
All right. Does anybody have any reports?
I missed the hall thing.
Oh. Don't look so beautiful. Okay, I don't have anything either. And we don't have any minutes in our packet. No, we don't. I don't have any topics not reasonably anticipated, so do I have a motion to adjourn at nine oh seven?
So much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.